Good morning. Welcome to the July 20, 2020 Meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to remind everyone that masks are required per the city ordinance. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask you to please stand. Join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the public portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Anyone wish to speak?
Action items. Norman Lannan, Solana, Kansas. Were you going to be able to comment on number two of that resolution?
That is our policy.
Well, it hasn't been in the past.
Okay.
So, anyway, this resolution's got so many holes in it. How are you going to?
Okay. Wait till we get to that. We have to speak to items that are not on today's agenda. Anyone else wish to speak? We'll move to the consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax roll, approval of prior minutes from June the 3rd and June the 9th, approval of accounts payable and payroll as presented, approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any items that wish to be corrected or pulled from this agenda by commissioners? If not, those items, the consent agenda will be approved. We'll move to action items. Item number one.
RFA number 190-20, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, certification of local government approval for nonprofit organizations receiving 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant. Mike Lindham, Central Kansas Mental Health Center.
Is Mike here?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to assist Mike. I've been working with Mike in regards to this request for action and asked him to be here today to assist with any questions that you might have. Central Kansas Mental Health is seeking for some local government approval to apply for and receive funds through the 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant. This grant provided supplemental funds for homeless assistance under the CARES Act. As part of their submission to this, they do need certification of local government approval to do so, and Mr. Lindham can talk a little bit more about what it is that they're projecting to do with this particular grant should they be able to receive those funds.
Okay. Good morning, Mike.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I need to be taller, or that needs to be different. Okay. These funds were offered to us through the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. The funds are for homeless dollars and they come from HUD at the federal level. Basically, we would be using the funds to help people that are homeless more rapidly move into housing. For instance, there are women and families at Ashby House that through substance abuse issues and legal issues that come with that, might be ineligible for a period of time for Housing Authority programs, so we would be able to house them for a period of time until they're eligible for housing. And so, that's essentially what we're asking for. We're applying for around $53,000. We will also ask for, within that, is a small amount of money to apply for personal protection devices for our homeless street outreach teams. We work with Solana Rescue Mission once a week to go out and talk with the people that are maybe not in shelter currently and check on safety and provide food items and stuff, so we'd be asking for some funds to also buy masks and other devices.
Mike, who do you apply to for this grant?
The grant will go to, when I send it in today, it will go to the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services, but it's funded by Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. So, in the end, we'll answer to KHRC.
Okay. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Mike, are there any matching funds or any?
Not required by this, by the CARES Act.
Any other comments from commissioners? As it is an RFA, does anyone from the public wish to speak to it? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the certification of local government approval by CKMH.
It's seconded, Michael.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 190-20, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, certification of local government approval for nonprofit organizations receiving the 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant. Are there further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lindham, for coming.
Thank you, and I wanted to let you guys know I appreciate Hannah. She's been really, really helpful, and I know she's over her eyebrows with stuff now, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. We will move to item number two.
Resolution 20-2299, Declaration of a State of Local Public Health Emergency for Celine County, Kansas. Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioner. I am here to request another 60-day extension on the local disaster declaration. Staff feels it's necessary due to the increasing case numbers that we are seeing in Celine County, as well as the declaration opening up resource requests for PPE and testing supplies. We are still having requests from hospitals and other providers that are needing this assistance, and without the declaration, we cannot attain these resources.
And by and large, the purpose of the public health emergency is to be able to apply for state assistance. Is that correct?
Public assistance afterwards, resource requests, and it covers us from liability if anything may happen during this disaster.
And there is no obligation on the part of financial or anything else, but you're... Thank you. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Is there anyone who wishes to comment from the public?
Norman Lannan, Solana. These health resolutions have holes in them. Even the state has issued a statement that we're contradicting, we're confronting state and federal constitutional rights. Can you issue a resolution, make it non-binding? I know you can't answer the question, but who's going to enforce this? Who's going to be the medical person that says I'm deaf or not deaf? I can speak or can't speak? They've got so many holes in this.
That doesn't have anything pertaining to this at all whatsoever.
That's what I asked you about before. You told me I had to speak on it here.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Are there any other comments from commissioners? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2299 as presented.
Seconded the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 20-2299, Declaration of a State-Local Public Health Emergency for Celine County, Kansas. Further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, the motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And I probably should apologize to the citizen because that was a resolution, and normally we don't allow public comment on resolutions, only on RFAs. So, you were correct and I was wrong. Informational item, item number one.
County Engineer Update. Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, I'm here to give my quarterly update, and I'll just jump in with what we accomplished since the last time that I gave my update. And the first one is there's a bridge construction project on Reese Road south of I-70 that we completed, as well as a bridge on Honoc Road north of Cloud Street that was also completed. Both of these structures were constructed by Reese Construction, a local contractor. Waterwell Road reconstruction project between Burma Road and Lightville Road is nearly complete, so when I was putting this, my report together, I was really hoping, thinking that this project would be a lot more complete than it is now. With all of these rains, it's really been pushing, you know, the last 2% of our project back. We really only have about a day to day and a half to clean up some ditches and get those shaped up, and then get it seeded, and we're done. But it just seems like these rains every couple of days, it just does not allow things to dry out, so that's kind of where we're at with that project. Hopefully, by the end of the week, we'll be able to get some dirt work done and get it seeded and be done with it. The next project that we've accomplished is there's a two-inch hot mix overlay on Old Forty between Niles Road and Solomon, and that was completed by APEC here in town. And then, my office did a survey of the city-county building grounds, and we have that completed and submitted to the building authority.
I want to comment just for a second or a question.
Yes, sir.
Waterwell Road, which has been in the works for, since some of us, before we were born almost, if you want to go to that far, I wonder if it wouldn't be something to include the public and have a ribbon cutting for that, opening of that road.
Sure.
And Commissioner Weiss, who lives in or represents that district, would be the appropriate guy to probably cut that ribbon? Just a thought.
Sure. You know, I think that'd be a great idea, and I'll talk with Phil about any kind of details and, you know, how we want to do that.
Give them a heads up, or any commissioners could come, the public, and, I mean, it's just been so long and in the works, and such a big project, and such an important project to the area and that particular district why, it seems like it's noteworthy to draw some attention to it.
Yes, yes. And I think the project's, it's turned out nice. Yeah, we've got some erosion out there right now with all the rains, but once we get it all buttoned up, I think it's a project to be proud of, I think.
Okay. I'll let you work that out with the administration of Celine County.
Sure, sure. Okay. The next part of my report is the projects that we're currently working on. You should have in front of you, as well as up here on the wall, we have our 2020 Proposed Road and Bridge Program, and it's been updated. Again, this map is always kind of a work in progress, and as things happen throughout the year, we've, you know, add and take things off the project list, so. But I'll just go ahead and get started on, there is an orange or a brown rectangle right there. This is a 160-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab on Minner Road between Gypson Valley and Donmire. This project's been around for quite a while, and we're starting to move forward on this project again. We should have geology and a geotech report on that very soon to kind of help us out with the foundation of that bridge. I would like to have the project bid out towards the end of the year with 2021 construction. The next grouping of projects is really the blue circles on the map. You know, here, we should have, there's five projects, and these are reinforced concrete box projects. They're on Niles Road, Cunningham Road, Minner Road, Woodward Road, and Cloud Street, and we're going to open up bids tomorrow, tomorrow morning, to award, to see who's the low bid on those projects. Another project, it's kind of a miscellaneous project that we also bid out to a contractor, is a project on Salinsburg Road west of Holmes Road. This project replaces two corrugated metal pipes and replace it with one 10-foot diameter steel pipe. TNR Construction, which is a local contractor here in town, was awarded the project. Last week, his schedule was to start that project July 27th, however, with the rains, I'm not sure if that's going to bump that project back a little bit or not. I haven't talked with them about that, but it should be beginning here towards the end of the month on that.
Now, which project is that?
This is Salinsburg Road west of Holmes.
That's not already done?
No, that's not, no, no.
I started saying...
It's been designed and bid, you know, and we awarded it, the contract, or the contractor just hasn't started on that project yet.
Okay. I was just, okay, and excuse me for interrupting your deal.
No, you're okay.
But the county just finished putting in a 60-inch tube there.
Yes, yes.
About the same spot. Where's this at compared to there?
Correct. So, this project here is just west of the project that the county did.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Excuse me.
Sure, no, I forgot all about the one that the maintenance guys put in, so, yeah, they're very close together.
And they did a great job on that.
Yes, yes, they did.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, I guess now I'll move on to some asphalt road maintenance, and I'll start off with our Payment Crack Seal. Payment Pros was awarded this project, and these are the projects on the map with the red lines, and they plan on starting that work sometime this fall. Moving on to our Bitumna's Chip Seal, and that's the blue lines on the map. Circle C was awarded this project, and they're going to start construction in late August, early September. I did add to the project Burma Road and Cloud Street there. Those are projects that we chip sealed last year and had some issues with, and I felt that it would be a, it'd be a really good idea to get those chipped sealed again and get that road covered up. I also removed Fourth Street leading into Assaria. There's a little section of road just south of Assaria Road called Fourth Street that we planned on chip sealing, and we reevaluated that road and just the condition of the road. There was some patches and some bad cracking that we felt like there was a little more significant maintenance needed on that road, so we decided to add that to our overlay project. And so, moving to our overlay projects, which is the black lines as well as the black triangles on the map. The black triangles are some spot locations where we have some asphalt work. But what we have left on our overlay projects is Centennial Road, which is about a half-mile, well, from Waterwell Road, a half-mile north, and that is a joint project with City of Solana. And then, we also have the Fourth Street that I was talking about, is about 1,000-foot long, so it's just a short little section that we added to the program. And then, the several small spots where, you know, out in the county, we've got an asphalt little water crossing where there's no pipes, the water just runs over the road, you know, and those sites have been kind of ignored or forgotten about for quite a while on our asphalt, and it's just time to get some asphalt on those again. Moving on to aggregate shouldering. I did change, on your map, it might be a pink or a purple line. It didn't print out very well, so I did change it to the green line here on the map that's on the wall. And so, I've got two sites here. The first site is Burma Road from Coronado Heights to Thorstenberg, and the second one is Donmire Road from Old Highway Forty to Country Club. These projects are just shouldering projects, especially on Donmire. There's not much of a shoulder on there now, and so this is to add some material in there to try to start obtaining a shoulder on there, so. So, I've added these two projects. They are out for advertising right now, and so we'll be opening up bids for that in August. And this is probably going to be an early winter to mid-winter type project, so it's one of those, it can be mid-winter, even late winter, but we run into, you know, risks of frozen material, and I'm not going to allow frozen materials, so it kind of depends on how the winter temperatures goes when those projects will be completed. Next is road improvement projects, and this is the brown or the orange lines on the map. Simpson Road from Magnolia Road to Crawford Street. This project is, will be let through KDOT, and it's used in federal funds. The funds are called the High Risk Road Roads Funds, or the HRR. And this project will be adding shoulders to Simpson Road, as well as regrading the ditches, so we have some flatter four slopes, and just really creating a lot safer road. This program is scheduled for a 2022 construction timeframe. The next is FEMA mitigation projects are also little brown lines, and some of them are so small, they're almost, you know, little brown dots or orange dots. These projects, I'm working with KDEM and FEMA on these, and so nothing's for sure on these, but we're moving forward, and I decided to show them on the map here. But I've got five projects located, and that's Simpson Road between Jasper and Gypson Valley, Gypson Valley between Crawford and Country Club, and Cunningham Road between, south of Stemel. Those three projects, where we're looking at doing some road realignments around some channel, channel erosion work, and then Gypson Valley Road north of K4 and Kingman Road west of the city of Gypson is also on there where we'd like to do some upgrading on some flood-prone areas.
Does Kingman Road go west of Gypson? I thought it was just north and east.
Well, it's west of, oh, I'm sorry. That's a typo. It should be east of Gypson.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry. Thank you for catching that.
I was going to say that road is missing in action on my mind if it is west.
So, yeah, sorry about that. And so, all of these projects, the documentation's been submitted to FEMA, you know, and so it's going through their review and approval process, and there are many layers of review and approval process, and so I can't tell you when these projects, you know, if they do go, when they'll be built, but I would sure hope that we can build those next year sometime. The next project is a CIP project, and that's the bulk fuel containment in the Road and Bridge Yard, and this is going to be replacing our earthen berm around our bulk fuel tanks with a concrete containment structure. Right now, we're working with a contractor. We need to lower some electric lines leading from the shop out to the tanks. We'll get that lowered, and then we'll start advertising a bid for the concrete containment structure. It's already designed and kind of ready to go on that. Some other projects that we have is we are moving forward with our next round of reinforced concrete box projects. Those are all surveyed, and they're in the plant production and design phase of that. We're always constantly doing covert inspections around the county. There is the local road safety plan that's also using some federal dollars as HRR funds. This program, or this project, is going to be evaluating all of the paved roads in the county and then evaluating for safety, safety-related issues. There is, KDOT hired a company to perform that, and we're really grouped in with 19 other counties, and so I haven't received an update on when Celine County is going to be, it's going to be our turn for the evaluation, but it's supposed to be sometime this year. And then, the last one here is I'm working with KDOT and Union Pacific Railroad on some railroad crossing projects on the Meere Road and in Bavaria where the railroad is. The Meere Road project is going to move forward where we're going to be upgrading, the railroad and KDOT is going to be upgrading the, what they call a passive crossing, which is just the stop signs and the crossbucks, to an active crossing where we'll put signals and then the crossing arms. In Bavaria, which is the north crossing, we've got some issues there. We've got to work out before, we figure out what's going to happen there, but I'm working with Phil on that to come up with some, our recommendations on that.
Justin, perhaps you're aware of it, but the railroad crossing at Simpson Road and Old Forty, I mean, it is so rough that, I mean, I watch traffic go across there, and I mean, they can't even go 1 mile an hour across there. It is so bad and...
They tried patching it. I think it was, might have been last year, early last year. I don't think it held, and I keep bringing it up, because that was when I was talking to them, you know, the railroad about every other day.
That's the UP, right?
Yes, yeah. They're on Country Club, and so I kept bringing up Simpson Road, and they're aware of it, and they tried patching, and I agree, it didn't hold very well at all.
You know, when you go across there and watch cars go across, I mean, even the railroad, the rails themselves are all, you know, pretty loose and what have you, so.
Yeah.
If you'd stay on top of that one for us, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, sure. As far as a budget update for the 2020 Asphalt Construction Program, which includes the chip seal, crack seal, and overlay, it's estimated to be about $2.3 million, and the budget available for these projects is at $2.5 million, and that budget is a combination of the asphalt contractual and shouldering line items, the federal fund exchange program, as well as some dollars from the impact fee fund. The two shouldering projects, which is the standalone shouldering projects, I request that money to be taken out of the one-mill special road construction funds, and then the one project, oh, the miscellaneous, I shouldn't call it miscellaneous, but that extra drainage structure project on Salinsburg Road, that was bid out for $53,600, as well as our boxes that we're bidding out, and that'll be taken out of our two-mill bridge fund. Is there any questions?
Pretty well covered for me, but...
On Burma Road, you have it slated for another chip seal.
Yes.
Just south of State, there seems to be some damage to the road. Will there be any repairs made before that chip seal or?
Yes, yeah. What we'll do is we'll go in with our DuraPatch machine, our maintenance will go in there and, you know, and fill in some of those holes and get it leveled up on that, so.
And second, on your one-mill special road construction account, have you developed, I know we've visited extensively about projects, and do you have a five-year overlay of what you project that, those funds to be spent on?
Right, and so Darren and I, we came and presented on a process of how to use those funds, and Darren and I, we've been working, even before that meeting, we were kind of working on some ideas and how we want to proceed with that program. Darren's been on vacation for the last week and a half because he's been moving, you know, and so I haven't had a chance to sit down with Darren and, you know, schedule our next step in that process, and that next step is to have a presentation to the commissioners about looking back, you know, where have we spent that money? You know, what programs and projects have we completed with that money for, and that's kind of the first step. And then, the next step on that is really trying to look forward, how we're going to be spending that money in the future, so. So, I guess to answer your question is, we're currently working on that, and we should be presenting that and talking to you commissioners about that very soon.
Great. Looking forward to it.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
Quarterly 2020 Budget Update.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. So, for the quarterly budget update for the second quarter, I looked at the, all the county budgeted funds for the first six months of 2020 as compared to the first six months of 2019, and fortunately, somewhat unbelievably, there's not a whole lot to report. In the general fund, which of course is the largest county fund that provides most of our services, overall revenues in the general fund are up by about 3/4 of a million compared to the same period last year, and expenditures are down just over 200,000 compared to the same period last year. There's a lot of variation within that, but overall, the picture is quite good. The only other two funds that I will mention are the Health Department Fund on the revenue side and the Road and Bridge Fund on the expenditure... and the Road and Bridge Fund on the expenditure side. The Health Department Fund, I've been concerned about in terms of their revenue picture because of them having to pull off a lot of their grant-focused programs and repurpose to COVID-related tasks. However, they have been able to bill out many of their grants through the first half of the year. And overall, their revenues are up $155,000 compared to last year. And about half of that is due to increased property tax revenue. And the other half is due to their program activities. So I was very pleased to see that. The Road and Bridge Fund on the expenditure side, they're up by over $900,000. But I think that's actually a good thing. And that relates to the presentation you just had from county engineer Justin Mater because it's not their routine maintenance activities that are driving that increase for the most part. It is their contracted asphalt work is up nearly 3/4 of a million. And then their gravel road safety upgrades are up, and their aggregate purchases are up. So they appear to just be more successful this year in getting projects out the door than they were last year. So I think overall, it is a good quarterly budget update. No reason for concern at this point. Obviously, still a lot of uncertainty out there in the world. So continue to ask departments to watch their spending. And finally, we'll mention that reimbursements from the coronavirus relief fund should be processed in the middle of next month. So that should further enhance our revenue picture, so.
The Spark money, the $11 million that, I know at the KAC meeting last week, they said that all the counties should have their money by yesterday. Do you know if we've received that or not?
I do know the answer to that, and I'll get to that in my county administrator report the very first thing I got here, so.
Okay, all right, good enough. Any other questions from anyone? We'll move to item number three then.
County administrators update.
Now.
So thank you for that transition, Mr. Chairman. So the first item I have to report is that the coronavirus funding advisory committee continues to meet. They did meet yesterday, and we received word from the treasurer yesterday morning before that meeting that $11,026,434 was deposited in our account yesterday morning.
All right, we're ready to spend money now.
We are, well, we're not quite ready to spend it, but we do have it.
We've got it there to spend.
We've got it there to spend, which is step one. So on the note of being ready to spend it, we will be meeting, the committee will be meeting again tomorrow to review the application that we hope to get out to agencies tomorrow for applications for direct aid plan. We have already gotten out the reimbursement requests to the cities and schools. We've asked them to return numbers to us by this Friday, the 24th. We will be asking, when we get the applications for direct aid out tomorrow afternoon, hopefully, we will be asking for those to be returned by next Friday, the 31st. And I did want to mention to the public who may be watching that there is a place on the county website. If you go to the coronavirus page, there is a link to the CRF committee. And on there, the public can submit ideas and requests for information.
Very good.
The second item that I wanted to mention today was that next Tuesday, this is just a heads up, next Tuesday, Kansas Wesleyan University will be coming before you and requesting that the county serve as a conduit bond issuer. We did this before in 2012, issued some educational revenue bonds on their behalf. But I know none of our current commissioners were on the commission at that time. So this is kind of an instance of first impression for you all. But I've spoken with bond counsel about this process. And the main thing to note is that this will not affect our issuance in terms of if a jail bond were to pass in November. So we'll have more on that next Tuesday. And finally, I just wanted to mention that last week, you all approved publication of the budget. And we will getting that, be getting that taken care of. But it will not be exactly the numbers you all saw. It's actually down just slightly, about $20,000 or so. We received Fire District Number Four figures from the city of Salina. Those are down a little bit from what I had projected. Also had our auditor Randy Hoffmeyer review the budget. And he made some excellent suggestions, which resulted in some downward adjustments to the one-mill and two-mill expenditures. I've also included Fallen Improvement District in there, which we haven't done in the past, but Randy says we should have been doing. And the one remaining thing that I want to do before getting that published is distributing that, the amounts of money for the 1% raise. We had put it all in one place, and we want to distribute that out to all the departments before we officially publish. So just wanted to make sure, full disclosure, that you knew why it would be just slightly different than what you all saw, so.
Anyone have any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item number four.
Commissioners' comments.
I'd just like to, if I could, say something about it. It's like I know that a lot of people out in the southeast part, on Holmes Road here a week and a half ago, we had a sinkhole show up in the middle of Holmes Road, South Holmes Road. And so the Road and Bridge Department is doing a great job on getting that torn out. And they was going to be putting in a new tube today. And so that is probably going to be on a back burner here for a minute or two before the rain settles in. But anyway, they're doing a heck of a job getting that torn out and getting it replaced. So hopefully, that'll be open by the middle or latter part of next week.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make a comment. We approved the minutes of the June 9th commission meeting. And I'm just concerned that we're six weeks back in receiving our minutes. And I would like to challenge the county clerk's office to maybe get our minutes out in a more timely manner.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, item number five, which is announcements. Anyone have anything? I will take a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourned today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion does carry. We are adjourned. Thank you for watching.